Thank you, thank you very much. I'm Vicki Boyer. I am from Orange County representing myself. I want you to know I'm a North Carolina native and I can trace my ancestors here back to the 1730s. I'm going to tell you that this is one of those days that will live in infamy in North Carolina history. Today, North Carolina Republicans show their true face. They have lost all sense of honor. They have lost their Christian values. They've become completely absorbed into the American fascist party. Their oath of office sworn to with their hand on a Bible means nothing to them. It was only a means to an end. Their actions today prove that their plans for North Carolina are so unpopular that they have to cheat to win. They don't want to govern, they want to rule. I hope they will remember that old adage that cheaters never prosper. The best sign I saw Saturday at a No Kings rally was this. Yo Papa didn't run moonshine through North Carolina hollers just so you could be a bootlicker.
Shame on this General Assembly, shame on North Carolina for sentencing silence and the will of the people northeastern North Carolina. A true swing district that reflects the diversity value of the state. For ninety-one years after 1901, no black citizen represented North Carolina. I broke that banner. I was that person who was elected in 1992. I represented teachers, I represent farmers, those of the diverse bear. In 2024, voters in this district chose a Republican president and a Democrat black representative. That although I did not vote for that president, that is democracy. What you're doing today means that you are against democracy. But this redistricting strips indeed the majority of black counties from the first congressional district and bury them in a heavily Republican area. That is an act of gerrymandering. You also, you also remove one of the three black representatives. Shame on you for saying you didn't consider him.
Thank you.
Do you not know that Donald Davis was black? Well, I'm here to inform you.
Like many of you, I'm from a rural country town where most people vote Republican because that's how my father, my papaw, and my granddaddy and generations of my family voted. The GOP is a party of people who allow the social movements of their day to push them to do great things. I know what you're feeling in these confusing times. I know you're a Republican politician because you too want to do great things and you're confused by the men and women around you who aren't living up to the principles of the party that you were raised in. So I've come here today to say, leave your church and your lying abusive pastor. Burn your hoods instead of your crosses. Open your closet doors instead of hiding your truth. And I promise you that when you do, what you'll find is a huge gigantic family that loves you just the way you are. And you don't need to stay on your knees worshiping the men who bully, belittle, harass, and rape you with their golden fallacies of lies and hatred. I know that deep down inside of you, you know that these maps are racist, immoral, and wrong. Vote no- ...state budget. In doing so, you will do something great and you will save yourself by finding your freedom in your truth.
I asked Representative Pricey for the amount of taxpayer money spent on redistricting litigation. Twenty-two million, five-hundred-twelve-thousand redistricting litigation since GOP took over in 2011. It's ironic to me that the Party for States' Rights is abdicating their own power to Trump to give a convicted felon with an incredibly dangerous and unpopular agenda your power. And you Republicans are willing to kneel to fascism for Burger's desperation not to be primaried. It's a misdirected claim that this is not a race targeted when you're targeting the district that's known as the Black Belt. This is the Southern agenda. You will be on the wrong side of history. Today is an amazing opportunity for a Republican who has the nerve to be a hero by standing up for equal representation and the rights of black voters. I demand Medicaid funding and a moral budget, not racist maps.
I am Tamika Walker Kelly, an elementary music teacher from Cumberland County and president of NCAE. It has been a hundred and thirteen days since the General Assembly has missed its deadline to pass a state budget. A hundred days of missed opportunities for students across the state. A hundred days of educators trying to function without the raises that they deserve. And a hundred days of uncertainty for schools trying to plan. But instead, you are busy drawing congressional maps once again. And so while teachers are wondering if they can stay in the classroom, you are rigging the system. And instead of students who are thinking of them, who are sitting in overcrowded classrooms, you are breaking the rule of law to benefit the powerful few. Education, public education is the foundation of our democracy and this economy. And yet it is playing second fiddle to people's political ambition. And that should not be so.
Great plan, citizen voter. The map hasn't changed since yesterday, so my comments will be equally familiar. This president has circulated a video of himself dropping excrement on American people. This is the god you worship, the dictator you appeal to, you appease, the king you pander to. While thousands of North Carolina citizens are on track to lose health insurance, while civil rights guaranteed by the Constitution are now daily trampled on. No one is safe from his retribution, and it's not even you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a republic if you can keep it, not to a felonious monarch in a gilded house on Pennsylvania Avenue. Are you monarchists? Are you not Republicans? Absolute power is corroding the republic. Just because you can legally eat everything at a buffet doesn't mean it's a good idea.
This action by the legislator is a shameless and deliberate attack on democracy. First, let's be crystal clear about the racist nature of this redraw. You're not just shuffling lines. You're dismantling a historic black opportunity district. The claim of no racial data use is a legal shield to mask real world tragedy. You are effectively silencing the voices of black North Carolinians and erasing their history of representation. This isn't just partisan. This is a moral regression. The sheer arrogance in this move is just as appalling when we all know that between eighty-four and eighty-seven percent of all North Carolinians believe partisan gerrymandering is wrong. In a moment when our families are struggling with real issues, you are wasting taxpayer time to pick your own voters. This map is a stain on our state. You do not have the right to ignore the voices of your constituents. Shame.
Pat Butler, I'm here for myself. And as a mother and grandmother, I taught my children not to be a bully. But if they encountered one, to not bow down, but to stand up for what they knew was morally and ethically right. And I imagine that many of you did the same thing with your children. So I'm asking you now, how do you explain to your children and rationalize that you're bending the knee to the dictator? How do you do that?
Apparently, you all have not realized you work for us. You do not work for yourselves. You do not work for Trump. You work for we, the people. I'm also a proud participant in the No Kings Day where we stood seven million proud to say you represent us. These maps do not represent the state of North Carolina. These maps do not represent your constituents. We've heard that you're wasting taxpayer money. We've heard there's ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven public comments and us saying we want fair maps. These are not fair maps.
Thank you, Ms. Amali.
My name is Gerald Givens Jr. I proudly served this nation for two decades in the United States Air Force. I defended freedom, not for a party, but for the principle that every American should have their voice equally complemented. I've heard it said that race wasn't used in drawing this map. But I've seen the effects longstanding black communities in places like northeastern North Carolina, Greensboro, and Charlotte have been split apart or packed so tightly together that their voices can't shape outcomes beyond their own district. You don't need to use racial data to see racial impact. When a district that has elected a black representative for decades is redrawn so those voters can no longer elect their candidate of choice, that's not balance, that's silence. I didn't fight for selective freedom. I fought for every North Carolinian to have their voice heard, to us right. Defend the people's voice like I defended yours.
Article one, section ten of the North Carolina Constitution, known simply as the Free Elections Clause, states that all elections shall be free. Merriam-Webster's defined free as not determined by anything beyond its nature or being, choosing or capable of choosing for itself. In violation of the concept of free elections, partisan gerrymandering is the form of vote dilution, the devaluing of one citizen's vote as compared to others. That imposes a constraint on a voter's will. A rigged election is not a free election, nor is an election with a voter's voice is worthless because the election's results have been preordained by whoever wields political power. The rights that prohibit partisan gerrymandering are the bedrock of our sacred system of democratic government. And this is a shameful manipulation of our principles of democracy and the rule of law. And Mr. Blackwell, you were twenty years old, just four years younger than the late, great John Lewis when he had his head bashed in to protect voting rights. I know on which side of history I would like to stand.
Got my Bible here today. Don't be nervous. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. It's that simple. It's that simple. I've heard a lot of excuses for these maps. Gavin Newsom, California. When we get down to it, folks, is this what you would have your neighbor do unto you? Is this what biblical leadership looks like? These maps. These maps are the wet dream of soft men who won't even look up from their phones to face their voters. These are men who lust for a world where the powerful do what they can and the rest of us suffer what we must. Jesus wept.
My name is Eric Willoughby. I'm a sophomore at UNC Charlotte. And I just want to highlight what this kangaroo court actually is. This is a sham. This is a blatant racist attempt to limit the power of minority voters. This is pathetic, it is pitiful, and it is shameful. That is what this is. And you Republicans, you want us to be afraid because voters who are fearful do not show up. They do not come and fight you on everything. But let me tell you, hear us, see us. We are not afraid of you. The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice, as Dr. King said. And we will win in the end. Shame on you. Shame.
I'm Congresswoman Alma Adams. I'm a former member of this body. And I'm deeply ashamed of this body for putting the people of North Carolina last. Speaker Hall made it very clear that this attempt to further gerrymander our state is being done at the request of President Trump, not because it's in the best interest of North Carolina citizens. You focus on stealing another congressional seat after you've already stolen three and ridding our democracy, then addressing our states, not addressing our state's pressing issues. And we're tired of congressional districts being shuffled every election because you'd rather pick your voters than have them pick you. We're tired of being disenfranchised, of being embarrassed because gerrymandering is more important to you. So you're not just targeting a Democratic member that's obvious, and he is black, you must know that. You're trying to dismantle the district with the largest record of black congressional leadership in North Carolina history. And that's just not right. Your constituents are speaking to you today. I certainly hope you listen. I spent twenty years here. I know you. You should know your citizens, and you need to respect our wishes.
I'm no organization, just a very concerned American citizen. What's happening here right now because Pino, president in name only, asks you, his radical right minions, to steal more seats is an abomination. Chair Jones, your rhetoric and propaganda is astonishing. This started in Texas with Abbott, and California responded using your racist and right-wing tactics, and you don't like it. It's an abomination of our Constitution and what we, the people, want. Tell yourselves there's no racial component to this redistricting, or sorry, gerrymandering, if it helps you sleep at night. This shouldn't even be happening at all, and this legislator isn't even doing its job. Where's our budget, guys? Y'all have your priorities mixed up, and your hunger for maintaining power and control is sickening. It doesn't end here. We, the people, will continue to fight for justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and fair maps.
You know what? Thank you, thank you very much. I'm Vicki Boyer. I am from Orange County representing myself. I want you to know I'm a North Carolina native and I can trace my ancestors here back to the 1730s. I'm going to tell you that this is one of those days that will live in infamy in North Carolina history. Today, North Carolina Republicans show their true face. They have lost all sense of honor. They have lost their Christian values. They've become completely absorbed into the American fascist party. Their oath of office sworn to with their hand on a Bible means nothing to them. It was only a means to an end. Their actions today prove that their plans for North Carolina are so unpopular that they have to cheat to win. They don't want to govern, they want to rule. I hope they will remember that old adage that cheaters never prosper. The best sign I saw Saturday at a No Kings rally was this. Yo Papa didn't run moonshine through North Carolina hollers just so you could be a bootlicker.
Shame on this General Assembly, shame on North Carolina for sentencing silence and the will of the people northeastern North Carolina. A true swing district that reflects the diversity value of the state. For ninety-one years after 1901, no black citizen represented North Carolina. I broke that banner. I was that person who was elected in 1992. I represented teachers, I represent farmers, those of the diverse bear. In 2024, voters in this district chose a Republican president and a Democrat black representative. That although I did not vote for that president, that is democracy. What you're doing today means that you are against democracy. But this redistricting strips indeed the majority of black counties from the first congressional district and bury them in a heavily Republican area. That is an act of gerrymandering. You also, you also remove one of the three black representatives. Shame on you for saying you didn't consider him. Do you not know that Donald Davis was black?
My, my, my. Y'all, that's some speakers that spoke in Raleigh last week about the redistricting. Late night, good evening, everybody. This is Late Night Live, the D C N Smoke coming to you on Tonight Politicking. What you just heard, those that tuned in late, was some speakers that spoke at the North Carolina General Assembly about the redistricting. And what I don't understand is Representative Richard Burr was told by forty-seven thirty-four if he would redistrict, change the first congressional district, that he would support him in upcoming election. Now, I don't understand how folks say it's not racial. I just don't get it. I just be glad when folk just call a spade a spade. I don't care who it is, black, white, or whomever. The first congressional district, like Congresswoman, former Congresswoman Eva Clayton just got through saying. And for you who's tuned in later, that was the beginning when it went back and started with the lady from Orange County, Vicki Boars. And then you heard former Congresswoman Eva Clayton. That was the beginning of the speakers. So when you go back, look at the beginning of this recording, so you can hear the rest of the speakers, because all of them was great. But to say that it's not racial, how can you say it's not racial when the first congressional district is a majority-black district? And then like Congresswoman, former Congresswoman Eva Clayton said, "Did you not know that Don Davis, our congressman, was black?" So how can you say it's not about race? But you know what tickles the hell out of me is, I gotta hear it from those guys. But when you have black folk that say it ain't about race, see, that's the problem. Why are they so scared? Why are they so scared? You know, you already got the majority in the General Assembly now. Same thing in the White House, I mean, on the national level. And they can't even pass a budget up there, and they got the majority. But they want to blame it on Democrats. And then what tickles the hell out of me is when folks say the Democrats don't take a stand. And now they have taken a stand, then they want to say they need to lighten up. Damn, which one is it? Now, I hate that SNAP, you know, is on a hold because after twelve o'clock tonight, you know, because of the shutdown, different things gonna take place. Some folk already ain't getting paid on the federal level. And then you're gonna have SNAP, all that kind of stuff being shut down. But see, folk, that's why you need to get out and vote. When you say your vote doesn't matter, I hope this is a wake-up call. You know, just like eight years ago, whenever it was the first time forty-seven thirty-four ran, I actually wanted him to win because I wanted folk to, I really wanted to hit rock bottom so people could understand. But they still didn't get it. They rolled them back in again. Maybe they need to have went under the bottom. I mean, I don't know what it was gonna take. But he showing them that he don't care about nobody, no matter what color you are. But he, he, he doing his thing. And I don't, you know, he could be stopped. When the boys say enough is enough, so I don't blame him. You know, they say, well, goodness having power and don't use it. But now, you know, abuse it. But they allow him to abuse it. So hey, I don't fault him. They could stop him. So we gonna see how that gonna turn out. It's gotta hit home at some point in time to see what's going on. Now, I wanna, talking about SNAP, I wanna play this part before I get into my little spiel. So let me play this right here, talking about SNAP.
Are you aware of USDA SNAP contingency fund? Yes or no? Yes or no? Are you aware of it?
Sir, I'm aware of that issue.
Are you aware that USDA, despite bipartisan demands from Congress, is refusing to use that fund to help keep food assistance going to families after Saturday? Yes or no?
Senator, my understanding is that is now in litigation and-
Right, it's in litigation because the administration is refusing to use the funds, correct? It wouldn't be in litigation if the administration would just use the five billion dollars that's available to use, correct? On top of the other funds that my colleague just referred to.
Sir, that's, that's a claim in litigation, and because it's in litigation, it's not something that I can-
So it's, it's in litigation because these are decisions that the Trump administration, that the USDA is making in real time. They're deciding to pit hungry people against sick people, and I think that's immoral. There's nothing legally stopping the administration from making emergency food assistance funds that they're just sitting on available for Georgia kids and families in November. But even as we debate what to do about these ACA subsidies, it is indisputable that the USDA under the Trump administration is choosing to pull hungry children into this fight. They're not just in this fight, they're being pulled into this fight, used as pawns for short-term political gain. I think it's deeply immoral, and I think we can certainly do better than that.
My, my, my. And the same thing is going on in other states here in North Carolina. I think I read somewhere where Josh Stein, something about ten million dollars. Let me see, can I find that right? I don't think it was a video though, but anyway. Hey, man, I'm already on. You ready? All right. Okay, y'all, I got a caller on the line, a guest for tonight. I was just talking about what was going on in the General Assembly with the redistricting. And I don't know where you seen all of the speakers, but it was about, I'd say six or seven speakers that I just played. And former Congresswoman Eva Clayton was one of them, and Vicki Boars from Orange County, and some others. But it was powerful. If you get a chance, go back and look at the beginning. But tonight I have Rock and Roll City Councilman Andre Knight. I'm just gonna start out with some stuff, because it was on the state level. I just got through talking about on the national level with the SNAP. Wait, wait, I tell you what, before I get into on the local level, let's go back. What do you think about the redistricting in North Carolina?
I just think it's a shame, you know, gerrymandering the district just that you just grew the congressman out of the district. To me, that says a whole lot, that, you know, you still causing voter disenfranchisement, disenfranchisement in the, in the, in the district. And you're making it harder for black and brown people to vote.
And what I don't understand, like I just got through saying before you came on, and they're saying it's not racial. I mean, Don, like Congresswoman, former Congresswoman Eva Clayton said, "Did you not know Don Davis was black?" I mean, so, I mean, what part folk don't understand? You know, Richard Burr told, I mean, forty-seven thirty-four, you know, told Richard Burr that if he would redistrict, that he would, you know, support him. But when you got bigger fish to fry- But when you got bigger fish to fry, uh, 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 y- y- you're not even dealing with what's going on, on, on the local level. I think the budget and stuff like that, and you're gonna spend time on redistricting. And then you got folk, um, talking about, uh, how it will affect Rockin' Mountain, Wars and all that, some case down in Georgia somewhere. But, you know, it's just, i- 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 it's just disgusting. Uh, all these years, we've been fighting, fighting and fighting, and then we're still talking, still fighting some of the same fights. And then when the young woke folk come on board, like they don't figure something out. And don't understand you're talking about, we talking about what we did in the past. Where if you don't know what happened in the past, you, you, you can't move forward. And then we are still dealing with the past. So how do you not talk about the past? Ain't you still dealing with stuff twenty-seven years ago, when you came on the council?
Sure, yes.
So it's crazy. I, I don't get it. I don't get it. Um, so.
When I say people, you know, talking that nonsense is gonna hand. Those folks. The, uh, election back. I mean, you know, in Rockin' Mountain, you know, we were sued, um. In the early eighties, I think. By Neil McGree, Superior and others. Because we had a at-large voting system and you couldn't get. Blast on the council. And now, you fast forward. You got some people that look like us saying, you know, you agree to a certain extent to have at-large. Voting issue. Something that. We fought to change, so why you going back?
Well, 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 that's because, look at their age, and then look at, uh, how long they been here. Uh, if they won't, um, uh, live in here. And then you look at what their motive is. If they're trying to appease everybody and not, uh, uh, being concerned about, uh, I'm black, I'm a black man. I'm concerned about me as a black, black community first. And I know that when we, uh, 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 um, when we do what we need to do, everybody game. It ain't like we gonna be able to move forward without anybody else. It's just like the, um, uh, the SNAP, I'm gonna get to that next. Um, um, you know, they wanna make you think that it's more black folk, but I've seen data. Uh, uh, this, uh, you know, it was created for other folk, all this stuff was created for other folk. But now when we come to the point where we are in the game, then they wanna change the game. What you think? All this was created for them back in the day. And that's working against them, so now, you know, we don't, and make it seem like we done arrived, we ain't all totally arrived. But we have come a long ways, you know.
Right, and still got a long ways.
A long ways to go, that's right.
I mean, if you look at it, we, we come in last and everything.
Right. You know, so it, 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 it just, it's sickness. Uh, but we're moving on to the SNAP part, uh, cause we got, I got quite a bit I wanna cover. Uh, um, so what you think about the SNAP, you know, uh, uh, what's going on? And, and from a personal opinion, you know, uh, people not thinking i- 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 um, their vote don't count and all that foolishness.
Well, I was at, uh, Little Caesar, and I had gone in and somebody recognized me when we talking. About, um, the war-three race. And I asked President, you gonna vote? And no, I don't vote. I said, man. I said, you ever pick, uh, cotton and, and, and tobacco? He said, no. I said, well, you going right back in the field, cause that's where they gonna put you at. And he looking at me. I said, man, don't you see what's going on in the world? And you don't vote? I mean. Some people don't understand the struggle that we have gone through, just to get to where we are. And then they say they're not gonna vote. I said, I understand it. Or whether they don't realize the struggle, or they just don't care. Don't understand. So. To me, you know, and then I was talking to people too. That's been working at the polls, and they were talking about how the low voter turnout. And it's just hard to get our people back out to vote. It's hard to get them to vote the first time, but it's like pulling teeth the second time. You know, so. You know, people take it for granted till they start cutting them snaps. And, and they don't cut it. Not only that, and they start cutting these section eight, and people realize. Hey, this really does affect me.
Well, I think it's because of the noise. I think, um, and, and we are the problem because we are not allowed those folk. To create a lot of noise and try to discredit our black leadership. And, and the problem with that is, those same folk that listen to the noise, when they get in trouble. Or need some resources, they call the very folk that the noise is, is about. But you, but you don't understand the purpose of why you need to make sure that we are in office. Uh, I thi- I think it's the noise. I think it, it's that black culture I keep talking about, we gotta change it. And, and if this right here don't show them that they need to vote, I don't know what, what it's gonna take. Because, um, twelve o'clock tonight, it's gonna be a whole new ballgame. So I told the group I'm in, that consists of twenty-three counties. We can write letters to the Journal Assembly, we can write letters to the, to the, uh, national, everywhere. But we gotta find a way to get to the voters and make them understand that this is your livelihood. And the, it's gotta come from, uh, the poor pit and everywhere. To make these folk understand that this is your livelihood. Because, um, they shut down Medicaid, Medicare, whatever, or, or, or SNAP and all that stuff. What you gonna do? What you gonna do?
Right, that's right.
I mean, I, I, I don't get it.
You know, when you don't have those benefits anymore. And you, and you, you know, they say you don't miss the water until your well run dry. They used to don't, you know, benefits coming every month, the price of the month. And now it's been thirty days, thirty-one days. And, um, you, you're not getting your benefits. So you go one or two months without it, I mean, it'll wake a whole lot of people up.
You got that right.
And then, you know, they cutting out, you know, they were talking about session, section eight, you know. And, and I saw something, what Trump was saying, they gonna cut all Democratic programs. Democrat program, what's the Democrat program?
And then, and, and, I mean, and then, and then Democrats say, black and white, both? I mean, so I, 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 I don't know, it's, I, I don't know. It's pathetic. I know that, and folks still ain't waking up. But they gonna get it. They gonna wake up. Might be too late. But they gonna wake up. Um. Uh, before I get into my, my notes, I wanna go here with you first. Um, things been sorta quiet, uh, as it relates to the, the, um, um. The Rockin' Mountain City financial, uh, 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 crisis. I know, um. I felt like it won't be many people at the meeting this past Monday because it was a four o'clock meeting. But I did think it would've been more people there. And then, and then those folk, they, they wanna talk about it on, on social media. And keep talking about myths that have nothing to do with this. And then you have black folk, again, like I say, allowing them, they, they, they work with them. They social media friends, and they just let them say anything and not respond. It's just like, uh, this past week, there's Stephanie, uh, Haugland. Uh, living in the city limits of Nashville. But she, she can talk about Rockin' Mountain, but they don't want me to talk about it. When I go to all the meetings, they go into the meeting. And I keep saying, longer than any member of the council right now, they're videoing, uh, out of pocket, they don't pay me nothing. But they got a problem when I come to the meeting and, and, and video and, and, and play it back long before. The council started, uh, or recorded their meetings before the pandemic. But they allow these kinda folk. What you got, a, a blog called Main Street Blog or something about the city. I just don't understand how black folk and white folk allow these folk to run down the city. She live in the city limits of Nashville, not, uh, 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 in the county. I could kinda understand it better in the, but what, do she go to the meetings over there? I doubt it. Does she go to the county commission meeting? I doubt it. I don't never hear nothing about them. But they let them come to Rockin' Mountain and say and do, or write about it, keep this straight up on social media. And then we here, fighting amongst ourselves, dealing with foolishness. Because of the noise. I don't get it. Attack, allow them to attack y'all, and I, I won't get into that later, but, but, I mean, what, what, what do you think about that? I mean, just allow folk, we had folk in place that would write letters to the editors and, you know, try to counteract this stuff. But I'm just amazed that folk I see on social media that don't say anything. Don't it make it hard for you? You know, you, you, you trying to fight for folk and then they don't even defend you. Don't it make it hard?
Oh, yeah, and, uh. I mean, it puts more work on people like you and me and others. Who are out here, uh, speaking truth to power and trying to wake our people up. And so, um, I mean, you, you're exactly right on everything you said.
It, it's sad. Well, I, I wanna move on to, um, um, us in the community. I was looking at a, um, local talk show. Uh, uh, um, W S C R T V, uh, show, um. Uh, um, look at them at night sometime, uh, when I get off work and, um, catch up on them. And yesterday I had got a call, uh, late yesterday evening. Uh, uh, that, uh, Neil Smith was on the show, had been up there, you know, hadn't been up there for quite some time. And, and, um, I heard that yesterday morning, somebody had asked about him. And I found it ironic, he was up there last night, but that's good. I mean, I, I ain't got no problem with that. But what I do have a problem with is, uh, uh, the conversation. Um, uh, and, and before I get to that, and, 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 uh, Alice Davis called in. Uh, cause I want you to address this, uh, before I get to the other stuff. But Alice Davis called in wanting to know why Peter Vaughn was still on the payroll, why was he there? And folk complaining about, about, um, why didn't they get rid of him? They got rid of us. But my problem with that is, and I keep saying, you gotta have people at the top with expertise to get stuff right. You can't just get rid of certain folk at the top. Uh, uh, they don't even understand that, uh, the city manager Elton Daniels was not even there, he was going to a manager's training. And he was there sitting in, carrying out the meeting. I don't get it. Again, here we go, got black folk. And then, and they need to cut that mess out about so many folk, they talked to so many folk, they talking about everybody and all that kinda stuff. I don't get into know everybody and all that because I ain't talking to everybody. So these negroes just tickle the hell out of me as if they speaking for all of Rockin' Mountain, all black folk. But could you tell me why, um, uh, Peter Vaughn is still there and then, uh, uh, on his last day? Cause I think they mentioned that on the show last night too.
Well, he's there because, you know, well. Just like Facebook, you can't believe everything you see and read on Facebook, so you can't believe everything you hear. And see on TV. And Peter Vaughn was there because the manager, uh, left. And, um, he stepped in at a time where, um, the entire council felt comfortable with him. Getting back in the saddle, until we got, uh, permanent city manager, which is Elton Daniel. And he was due to leave, I think, in December, if not before then.
Okay. Alright, now I wanna go to, uh, some of the conversations, get my notes. Um. Neil my, uh, um, uh, first of all, let me, let me say, uh, 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 it's funny, uh, Sherri Little. Had, had, had posted a comment and said that she had, uh, brought them back together, uh. Bronson and, and Neil my, and just like she had said that earlier on, that she never would've seen the time that. Uh, Bronson and I would've teamed up and supported, uh, 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 um, Carl Revis. And I had to let her understand, I, I, I hadn't teamed up with him. We just both, uh, uh, support the same candidate, which she's supporting the other candidate. So, I mean, I, I, I don't get it. But anyway, she made a comment on the post that she brought them back together. So that's when they start talking about, yeah, uh, uh, they said we had fell out and, uh, uh, and all that kinda stuff. And I know what I heard, I mean, we, we, they said the show was about fact, opinion and all that kinda stuff and nearing the old. Well, I know what I heard, I mean, I'm just going by what I heard. Yeah, I felt, heard it fell out, it fell out about a car and, 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 and money and all of that kinda stuff. And, uh, you know, that, that, I mean, it, it, we won't talk about still, let's talk about everything. So, I mean, we just going by what we heard, and that's what I heard, you know, so I don't know whether it's factual or not, it's opinion, like they said. Uh, some things fact, some things opinion, uh, but it don't matter with me which way or the other, I do know. I mean, what happened, um, uh, in the past as, as relating to me and them, so, and I can speak to that. But, uh, I haven't talked about that before. But, um, what tickled me last night, he come back home, he said he had been out of the picture. But I saw him throwing a lot of shade, uh, cause he was saying some of the same old message he said before he left. And, and, and one of the things he said, that, uh, y'all knew there was a problem. And y'all signed off on some. Now, let me touch on that right quick. Yeah, I know it was a problem. I took off work, picked you up, and we went to the L G C meeting, who, none of them was there. You know, I, I, I love it when these folk talk about stuff, and, uh, but, but I took off work. Picked you up, we went to the L G C meeting, when, uh, um, what little boy name now that, that's, uh, he was a, a local, uh, uh, uh. The L G C chair at the time, um, um, he was trying to keep you all from, uh, from, from, from the fire, the fire station. And, and he was trying all he could to keep y'all from, uh, going against the fire station. And Elaine Marshall, Secretary of State, said, no. I understand that, uh, they, the, the money part, but the folk deserve a new fire station, they deserve a fire station. And when we left there, they said that, uh, yeah, you need to do this, but you need to look at how you spend money going forward. So hell, yeah, everybody knew that, uh, it, it was an issue with money, uh, uh, but not at that point. Uh, uh, um, uh, you, you probably signed a whole lot of stuff, and, and it probably, I don't know what it was. It could've been, had to sign off on that. I mean, that was not a big deal. I think, um, Bronson said somewhere last night about when he brought it up, that it was, um, uh, uh, something about the enterprise or stuff. I, I can get to it. I don't even wanna get into that technical stuff. But, but, but my problem is, is we always, uh, throwing stuff out and we misleading folk. When you're not even at the table. So if you been away, why are you coming back trying to ring your mom? But the thing I had a problem with was, um, when he's, uh, say, yeah, and, and, and they voted unanimous to bring Keith Rogers here. Well, you explained it, I don't know how many times. That folk, uh, uh, said that you all was under, uh, was, was divided. So y'all want to show, uh, that y'all, especially with him coming in, they want him to think, uh, uh, how, uh, divided y'all was. And that happens on not only the city council, but school board, any, uh, uh, boards. A lot of time they go unanimous, try to keep the peace. But, Congress has to tell you that everybody don't, don't agree with everything. But, but, uh, w- w- is that not what you said, that y'all, y'all tried to, uh, show, uh, uh, you, you being united? Uh, when y'all brought him in? Because of the people kept saying y'all was divided? Is that not what you said publicly?
That's true.
You know, so.
Wouldn't it be divided?
Right. And I, I don't understand how, y'all, 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 y'all. Y'all some powerful folk, you and, you and, you and Black, but y'all got more votes than, uh, than everybody else. Y'all must get two or three votes apiece, cause y'all only two folk, but y'all got all the power. That's the part that tickled the hell out of me too. You know, everything blamed on y'all. Y'all run a thing. Y'all, 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 y'all better than, uh, forty-seven thirty-four and, and, uh, what the boy named, the coke guy? Y'all, y'all bad, you know, y'all is two, two bad bros, you know that. Yeah, y'all, y'all bad. You know, y'all is two two bad bros, you know that. Man, I tell you, it's interesting. Um, I touched on that about the L G C. Trying to get my notes, um. Uh uh I touched on that about the opinion, you know, um um. But the problem was, you had these young folk that were supporting Keith Rogers, and it appears that they still are trying to justify it. Uh uh um, you know, they supported him when he came. So I'm quite sure they gonna keep on supporting him. And still trying to make it as if uh 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 you guys, you and Ruben. Y'all, if y'all knew that he was gonna do that and. But how do you know? You don't know what anybody gonna do until they get in the position. And then once he got in the got in the position, then you start questioning. The problem is, when you don't question folk. He got in the position, y'all gave him a chance, and then he he went left. And my problem with that is, if he, if he is not a part of the problem, I don't know where the problem is. But I can say that if it was a problem with financing, he was in the chair. Did he bring any issue to y'all about any finances in the past that that was gonna hinder his job? Did he bring that to the table? I mean, I never heard it come up in a committee of the whole meeting or or regular meeting. If it was an issue with financing that he uh 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 needed to bring to y'all attention, then if he didn't bring to y'all attention, then. That's a problem. Obviously, things with the money situation were looking good when he came in. Because I know I wouldn't have came in and know that finance is won't looking right, and I'm gonna continue to move forward. And then with folk questioning me about uh uh this and that, and he gonna tell me, I'm gonna bring you the full report. Well, the full report would have shown that, hey, I'm I'm not a problem. So what did you have to hide? We still waiting on the full report. Do you not agree? Well, not from him. I'm hoping we get the full report out of this audit and the investigation, whatever come out of that. I don't know. Uh it's gonna be interesting. Um. Like I said, you didn't know how he was gonna perform. I mean, once he got in the position, that's where it is, like a marriage. I mean, you married somebody, you don't know how they all till you till you get involved. And and you start finding out issues about him that you didn't know. Uh um um, I mean, I read on the internet myself. How he did, where he came from, so I mean, you don't know how a person gonna do until they um get in the position. You can't read their mind and know how they gonna perform. Um, like I said, the problem was, you you had um um uh Mayor Senator Carlson, you had. Uh Elijah, Elijah Daltry, they ran on uh corruption. They come in to to discredit y'all, then the other two boys came on, joined them. Then Tom Harris came on. They came in to try to show the folk that y'all was corrupt, and it backfired on them. It backfired on them. Oh, yeah, Sherry, yeah, that, yeah, you know, they gonna discuss my opinion. That's fine. You know, I done been through that. You know, they did a whole. A whole week show on me that time, so I mean, I I got it, you know, you know. I just sit back and wait, you know, for folk to get there. Cuz uh uh everybody have come for me, they done got there, so you know, but now Sherry responded, Sherry. Uh comment in the chat. But um but they they ran on corrupt, y'all were corrupt. And look like the meeting done backfired on them. I mean, hey, I don't know, but all they ain't over the investigation, they over as I know. I'm just still waiting on the full report, so uh we shall see. Like I tell for for justice, no matter who is for or against, and and no permanent friends, no permanent enemies, no permanent interests, so I mean, where the chips fall? I do know. I'm so sick of them keep talking about uh 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 your light bill and and like I told them. Uh uh nothing came out of that, so why they still having that conversation? You know, and 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 why folk allowed them to have that conversation? Again, on these social media sites, folk ought to be shutting them down, but no. And then when I respond to them like on Rocky Mountain Concerned Citizens, they blocked me. Cuz I I I'm up there handling them by myself, nobody else come in. And then a a lady told me, she asked them, why do they go to my page and pull my post over there? And then tell me I'm mad, then they blocked her. Well, you know, folk, why you sitting back? Let them try to discredit our leaders. I I I I I just don't get it, but but um. One thing I do uh 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 do not understand too. Because uh during the time of the rate increases and uh uh on smartphone salaries now. Uh uh we'll touch on it too very briefly on the rate increase, so you you got that right. But um but uh uh these high salaries, they wanna give certain people salaries. Uh Ernie Jones got fired. After all, out of all the talk, I never hear them talk about these wage increases. Uh uh I was wondering how you gonna sustain that big increase for the uh 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 police department when. The police department don't make money. Do the police department make money? Andre. Do the police department make money? Do they bring, do they, do they bring in revenue? I mean, I might own tickets or something like that, but not enough to sustain salary of the big uh uh salary increase. That's that's my point. So I mean, how you gonna sustain that? Not they they are not talking about that. And and it came out in the uh committed a whole mean uh um uh uh some stuff that was financed was through. Opera furs, opera furs is a one-time furs, and they're talking about it's in the capital, uh they bought a fire truck and. Bought vehicles, they did this, they did that. Some things you got to do. How you gonna win the city? You gotta get, you gotta get, that's what's wrong with Elkhorn County right now with the sheriff office. They don't, they 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 playing games. But you gotta, you you know, the sheriff office, they they need vehicles, they need uh 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 increase. I mean, y'all guys over there doing what needs to be done when it comes to the employees getting mad and mad because you gotta do what you gotta do. But here, y'all been looking out for the employees to a certain degree. I mean, from y'all standpoint, cuz I mean, y'all don't do the day-to-day operation. But I'm just saying, you know, it 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 came, yeah, and and money was there. I mean, I'm at the meeting, so I ain't gotta hear about what these folk talking about. I'm at the meeting, and you said enough money was there for the give them an increase, so, okay, so where the money at? You know, so uh it's sad, man, I tell you, but this is kinda stuff we've been fighting for twenty years. And because we got woke folk and we send folk, uh they're just gonna help them keep us right where we are. Um, you guys, they gonna add it, it's basically all I want to um uh talk about tonight, um. You got anything else you wanna add, um? Councilman Mike.
No, you always lay it out, I mean, you know, so beautifully, so people can. Understand it.
You know, and I'm not running for anything. I don't get paid to do what I do. It's just that I am, I have been a member of Black Workers for Justice. Uh 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 um, been a a member of Rocky Mountain Break N W A C P since nineteen ninety-two. Longer than so many folk that have uh uh been born. I've been uh uh with the Democratic Party system. I got out of school in eight to one. Uh I've been on my job thirty-eight years, uh went to night shift for about four years, started eight to seven. It's around uh nine, I was still part of the party, but in other stuff, but uh um um. I I I've been acting since the since the early nineties, served on Rocky Mountain uh needs, which is uh Incorporated, which is new now. Uh um um, used to attend the Rockabout City, I mean, the Humorations Committee meetings. Uh long before I start going to the city council, I mean, that's why I start going to the city council, I mean. Then I served on that, they didn't, they had a problem with that and stuff and um, but I've been out here. I mean, I was there when you came on board uh and stuff, you know, we we know your story, we already got to talk about delegating that. Cuz I tell you they were gonna fire you at Edgecombe Community College, cuz they could not stand that Negro had bought that house over there on Falls Road. One of the most prestigious houses in the neighborhood and and then we got folk uh been happy for you. Uh uh standing up. That's why I come black guys do what they do now because we don't support each other. You ain't gotta like me, but I'm out here uh 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 speaking up on your behalf. And you at the house, like I do do ball games, I'm I was at the football games, cold feet freezing, hands freezing. And folk at the house like, I appreciate you beating you in the games. I'm out there, I even have a kid, I'm beating you out of pocket, and then you wanna give me a donation. And then I gotta put up with this kind of flag, and I know what you do, and you do the same thing, uh uh you 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 folk call you all the time. They'll call me when they can't get you. I mean, they just aren't grateful folk. But uh I ain't gonna hold you up the night. I don't know what I know. All I know is, I've I've been fighting.
Someone told me that you wanted to be a preacher back in the day, is that true?
No, sir, I ain't never thought about that. Mm-mm. No, I don't know where they got, I don't know where they got that from, man. That's first I ever heard that. No, sir. Look, I I'm the first one in my family that joined the church, uh in my immediate family, my mom and daddy and stuff and uh. But that ain't never crossed my mind, cuz I'll tell y'all real quick, I I I curse cuz folk don't get it. I'll be a cursed preacher, that that might be what they talking about cuz of. I said I'll be a cursed, uh 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 I'm a cursed, but but uh no, I ain't never thought about that. No, sir, never. All I wanna do, because I was raised up to hope folk. And my mom and daddy, they were community folk, did stuff for folk in the community. My mama took people to the dock, did all kinds of stuff and. Uh we had a family garden and we cooked for folk and all that kind of stuff, so that's where I get my stuff from. And and so um I had to reach out, I had to find the N W A C P, couldn't even find them, uh um. Cuz I wanna be a voice for for um the elderly and 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 for um young folk. So that's why I joined N W A C P. You know for yourself, most people join N W A C P, they come cuz they got a problem. That was not my case. I joined because I wanted to be a voice, cuz I was living at home. Mom and dad had worked a public job, plus reform, and so um like I said, I was raised to help folk, so that's what I was doing. Out here speaking up on the job and places about to get get fired and for speaking up and uh when the flood came in ninety-nine, like lost my job. Cuz out there trying to make sure people get situated and stuff, uh you know, I've just been a fighter for folk. So I mean, I I know, I don't know where they got that from about being a preacher, no, sir. No, I don't know where that came from.
On the front line fighting local, state, federal.
And 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 sometimes by myself, unless you and Louis Turner came, I I've been to many school board meetings and. I I've been to them like by myself until y'all came, you know, and and. I know, see, I lost a lot of ninety-nine flood and then uh there used to be something like YouTube online, I had them online, but. That went completely away, so I'm hoping these YouTube videos don't go away. And then back then, you know, I put them on on uh V H S, you know, uh uh and then I was had to convert them over to a D V D. And stuff, but then my barn, um still got a lot of DVDs and stuff now, but then it rained in my barn and stuff, so. But I wish I had all that stuff going back to the nineties, man, that that's that was powerful stuff. I wish I had a um um had put them in the library or somewhere like I did, um when my cousin them got killed down there, um. Come from a ballgame one night, basketball players and and they they ran in the creek right there at the house and. I had put that that video in the library. I wish I I I had I had thought about putting all my stuff, all cabinet in the in the library. That would have been a good thing to do. I see, yeah. Yes, or or I should have uh put them on the shelf over there at Falls Road. You know, and 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 what tickled me about that, about that, they don't let you know, uh uh. You know, you 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 want it, you got the house, so you could uh um. Let folk have a place to bring their family members, so they could do whatever they want to do during the day. A drop-off point and uh and you never lived it, but then it came in good during the time of the flood. Uh we worked out of the house, that's when we found out about the electric cities and helping people on get situated. Taking cases, like we were caseworkers and stuff, what called ourselves, uh uh what it commit on affairs of black people like. There, we were northeastern, committed of affairs of black people, something like that, uh. I mean, we went, me and you, we went all to meetings and there, you know, we we we're not limited to Edgecombe County and Nash County. Uh 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 we've been there, been out there, uh 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 Whitfield, Barbara, on the state level. Matter of fact, he gonna be in Wilson Sunday, um over there at the church, um um a mass meeting about the rendition. Yeah, supposed to do that, you know, cuz he's living in Raleigh now. Actually, uh the church uh in Wilson, that's his wife's church. He got remarried, so the church uh Wilson on Sunday, that that's his wife's church, so. Uh I'm going over there, we got homecoming at church Sunday and um and then I'm gonna leave there and going on over there to that, so I can recall that and everything. But uh man, we have put in some work, I know, out of pocket, like I said, going to meetings, uh 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 electric city meetings. I was taking off work, going over to Wilson with you to to the Melissa Palace, what 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 were those meetings? Uh well, the electric cities y'all went off, but one in Wilson, what was that? That was electric cities though too, well. Um, but anyway, we, I used to go to those meetings, I'll never forget with uh Rep uh Republican, what's his name, uh governor. He spoke one of the last times we rode at the meeting and stuff, but uh they just don't know the fight that you that you did, um. When it came to electric cities and stuff, but because they don't know the history, they don't know the story and. And we just gotta fight, 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 but we gonna fight till the end, till we can't fight no more. I don't care what they say about us. Uh one thing about it, the facts out there, it's documented in the in the minutes, in the meetings, it's documented on video. So, you know, we just let them talk. But um, I appreciate you, bro, uh and 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 you talking about uh folk that wanna support young folk. You know, I I I love supporting young folk, but I ain't gonna support young folk that ain't doing nothing and 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 stopping process, pro- progress. Cuz I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't work with all of them, but when when you get to the point where you can't work with them, then hey, you gotta move on. That's right. But I ain't gonna hold you no longer, man. I appreciate you uh taking your time out to come on, um. Um, um, and like I said at the beginning, I played the video of um. Those guys talking about the rendition up there when they spoke up there, that was real good, man. If you haven't seen it, you need to, you need to check that out. That was real good. Uh um and with the snap stuff going on, so we'll see after them, tonight twelve o'clock, how that turn out. But um, y'all got the municipal, got got the municipality, the election, war three. Y'all better get out and vote, then you got Edge, uh you got uh Princeville, Talbury, Pine Top, replacing. All politics is local. Do you not know they leave the local and go to the state? So you better get involved with who you elect on the local level, and that's what I obviously see, that that's what affect you the most on the local level. So you better get involved. I I don't understand that part, you know.
You don't have to go and uh. Uh, you know, the local level, what impacts you, your your daily uh living.
That's right.
Uh, the ordinance, the laws that's passed, I mean, it's harder locally than it does federally.
Right. A lot of federal stuff, you might not even uh offend you, but everything local gonna affect you, you know, taxes and. Uh uh everything, so uh y'all better wake up and 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 start being mad with the wrong folk. And look at the motives these folk got and what benefits them. And I know you tired, twenty-some years, I mean, had to fight, fight, fight. I know cuz I've been there, cuz I've been part of the fight. Folk mad with me, cuz I know you and the sheriff and everybody else, folk mad with me, cuz I know folk, well, you can get to know them too. It's y'all problem. Don't blame me. Let me go, I ain't gonna get started. I gotta play that speaker. I'm gonna play that tonight. I'm gonna play that right now, cuz that keep me fired up. Alright, man, appreciate you, man. We'll talk to you later. Alright, alright, y'all, this has been the Late Night Live of D C U Smoke, uh. You know, me and my ignorant self just come on and 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 talk and uh I hope you get something out of what I what I come on and talk about. And uh if you don't, just let me know, um 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 but um I try to, I try to be real and I. I try to be comical too, because um you know, we we gotta laugh, keep from crying. But this is some serious stuff, y'all, this redistricting, uh the Rocky Mountain City Council, um uh uh financial crisis and. And um and all this good stuff, but wait on the full report. Stop listening to the noise out there. Wait on the full report. We've been trying to get it. And I say, I don't live in Rocky Mountain, but I've been going to the meetings, recording them and 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 speaking up, doing public comments. I got family, friends, and enemies in Rocky Mountain, and everybody benefits. Even the enemies benefit, whether they like it or not, they gonna benefit from the work that you do, me, you, or who else. Me, you or whoever, if it's something that impact uh 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 politics, everybody benefits, just like I'm gonna say. When black folks move up, hell, everybody move up, cuz everybody benefits. Alright, y'all, I'm getting out of here, this has been Late Night Live, the D C is Smoke. Have a good weekend.